Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of January 9th, 2018. First agenda is a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have an approval of the agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Can we add the Deputy CEO under New Business?
Yes.
Okay, with the addition of Deputy CEO under New Business, all in favor? Minutes of the last meeting?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Department head, committee chair, updates.
Good evening, we're here for the finance. I believe that everything's in place now to start the whole process. I have had no other additional requests on the part of the board of selectmen's schedule that they have presented. As far as the school is concerned tonight, they're going to finish up the agenda for the introduction of doing their budget on the 18th, Thursday, the 18th. And their after every meeting, but the next four or five meetings will be on their budget. So as far as I know, everything is getting ready to go. Any other questions at all, if you have any questions?
Nope.
The board saw the email. Dr. Williams does include me in all of the emails that go out to the committee. I forwarded them to you guys so you can have the actual schedule in writing.
Yes.
Yes.
Old Business, we have the 2018-19 memos that were sent.
So just to follow up, I wanted to let you know that we did send out memos to all of the department heads and also to all the social services and 501Cs, letting them know that the board is looking for either a flatline budget or an increase of no more than 1.5. We asked them to put any special articles separately, and we also asked the social services, if they had a circumstance that was outside of their control that directly affected the residents of Acton, to put that in writing. And certainly, we can resend them the vetting form if it comes back in higher than 1.5. But as of now, every social service, every department head, every committee should have a copy of the memo and the schedule that the treasurer put together. Deadline is February 2nd, so those are out.
Personnel policy signature.
So based on the conversations that we had last week, we did make some small grammar changes, but primarily two big changes. One of them, we added in the part-time hourly employee. Ed, I know that you were absent for this, but we do have, it's considered full-time anyone over 21 hours. We did put a category in there for part-time hourly. This is workers that are paid on an hourly rate that work no more than 20 hours on a continuing basis. They're not eligible for benefits, PTO, paid bereavement, or jury duty or insurance. They are, however, paid for holidays and closures per the board. And then the other change really was under the paid time off, right? That was the only thing. So basically, you guys, oh, here we go. Closing. So employees may be excused from work due to reasons outside of their control as determined by the Board of Selectmen and/or town administrators such as snow days, extended holiday breaks, or building maintenance issues. Employees will receive the regular compensation for such closings only if the closings occur during their regular scheduled workday. This shall pertain to early closures and full day. Okay, everything else is pretty much good? So once you sign this, we'll send updated copies to all of the employees. Be careful how you make your motion. I know there was some discussion about backdating it so that Christmas holiday wouldn't be affected, so Michelle is here to make those changes based on your motion.
So retroactively to December 25th?
So the week of.
Week of.
So essentially, the employees that use PTO on that Tuesday, I think that we'll have one hourly, we'll end up owing them a day.
Do you want me to make the motion?
Sure, go ahead.
I make a motion that we approve the personnel policy retroactively back to December 25th, 2017.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Okay, looking at the Town Clerk, Tax Collector, Registrar of Voters, and Town Administrator Job Description, we went over them last week.
Made all of the changes. I think you approved the changes.
Changes were made and approved.
There's no actual places for signatures, but if you want to make a motion and then just initial beside the adopted date, that way we can put them in the files.
Okay.
Sure. These are two separate?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, I did read this over, I saw it in an email, so.
Oh, wait a minute.
Yeah, I think the only thing that was added after the fact, Ed, was the drug testing was added to the town administrator one.
You gave us two copies of the town administrator. Do you have the tax collector?
I might, let's see.
Or is it attached?
No, it shouldn't be that one, it's the same one?
Yep.
Well, who knew? Nope, if you want to make a motion, I'll get you one to sign afterwards.
Or is it attached? Is it right there?
That we're talking about?
Yep.
It is there?
Yep.
It's virtually the same person, isn't it?
Yep.
At the moment, okay. Okay, I make a motion that we approve the town administrator and the Town Clerk, Tax Collector, Registrar of Voters' job descriptions.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Are we reading down through these?
No.
So last week, I updated you on where the car stood. Unfortunately, when I left here on Tuesday, it was not in enough time to get it on the Shapley Agenda, so I've met with the administrator over there and told her where it stood. Since then, I did speak to Major Mitchell of the Sheriff's Department and also the sheriff. They insist that they're going to make good on it. Shapley is just going to hear about it tonight for the first time, so by next week, I'll have more of an idea. Essentially, the information that we had last week, you know, they did confirm that because of their fleet and because of issues, they put some money into it and put it back in. But certainly, the sheriff said that, you know, he acknowledged it was our car and that if we wanted to go out for bid, we could. So Shapley will discuss it tonight, and we'll put it back on next week.
Okay, thank you.
What was it they, where it wasn't here last week? What was the?
So we had, when Deputy Shaw first got his new vehicle, well, before that, we started talking about what we were going to do with the old one, what we were going to do with the old one. One of my first conversations with Sheriff King was to reach out to two towns that had deputy, and possibly because of the mileage on there, they might be interested in this car for, you know, $500 or $1,000, based on the mileage and the condition. They didn't, it wasn't worth a whole lot, but the sheriff asked that I reach out to those contract towns first. It did take several weeks into months to get responses from those towns. When we finally did, and it was apparent that they weren't interested, speaking with the administrator in Shapley again, we confirmed that it was time to go out to bid. So I sent an email to Major Mitchell saying, "When can I come down and take pictures of our car and get, you know, inside and out so we can prepare this bid?" And that's when the miscommunication arose, that they believed that we had already given that permission. So we're working it out.
Okay, thanks.
Use of Town Hall Policy Signature.
All right, third time's a charm with this one. We did cross out the line wave in the fee, the second that showed up twice in there, so just need a signature on that one, please.
We already voted on this.
Yep.
Fund Balance Policy Signature.
So last week, we reviewed this. You guys confirmed that you didn't have any questions on it. You were happy with it the way it was, so we were going to move forward. So everything is there. Based on how it was presented, the only change is the ED that was added to that one word.
Yeah, and I haven't read this yet. Should I read it?
Sure.
Town of Acton Fund Balance Policy. Purpose: To establish a target balance for the municipal government's undesignated fund balance description. Undesignated fund balance, also known as UFB, is a number derived by the year-end audit. It represents an accumulation from year to year, that was in parentheses, of year-end expenditure surplus, funds expended, unexpended, sorry, and revenue surplus, additional revenues above town meeting estimate. It may also be called surplus, and in government, accounting surplus is then recorded in the fund balance. If these funds are not designated for specific purposes, then they are called undesignated fund balance. Low balance effect. Some communities choose to keep as little as possible in the fund balance. While this may seem to be a good idea, it has several implications for the town. The most important being the effect on cash flows. Like a business with little more than the cash they take in daily, sometimes their expenses exceed the cash they have. This leads to a line of credit. In government, we would seek a tax anticipation note, TAN. UFB in part allows for funds in the bank to cover cash flow needs. Target balance. Government complies with generally accepted accounting principles just like private business. However, since we deal with taxpayers' dollars, our accountability is that much more critical. Auditors have historically recommended that a municipality maintain a UFB in the vicinity of two to four months' worth of expenses, which factors down to 16.7% to 33.3% of the current year's approved budget. For Acton, that would be a range of approximately $800,000 to $1.6 million for the current year. Did we already vote? We haven't voted on this.
I don't think so.
No, I think that last week I just asked you if you wanted to discuss it with her, but you were good with questions.
Yep.
Do we have a motion to, what's that? Do you have a question?
Yes.
Okay.
My only real question is, how does that treasurer feel about this?
She wrote it.
Sounds good. That answers that question. So you're fine with the numbers, then?
Yes.
The way they've, okay. Yeah, I make a motion that we adopt the Town of Acton Fund Balance Policy.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Being up here for, what, going on, well, being my sixth year, the numbers that have been stated here are the numbers that we have used over the last six-plus years.
Snow and Ice Class.
So last week, the, last week, it was brought to the board's attention about having this class that would maybe be beneficial to Acton and surrounding towns, have an individual coming down from the state. You guys, essentially, the two of you essentially voted to schedule it, and I think it was scheduled for the 16th, two Tuesdays from now, from 9:00 to 12:00. After the meeting, as you are aware, the, I spoke to both the road commissioners who invite them and their crews, did feel like it could have been handled differently. They've both attended the classes, and as you know, that's why I had them come in and talk to you today. So just putting it back on the agenda to follow out, find out what you want to do about it, or how you want to handle it. I haven't invited anybody yet, but it has been on social media, I think, in a couple of places.
Yeah, I wasn't here last week for the, you know, for the meeting. I do feel as though they should have been invited, or they should have been discussed with the road commissioners before we, you know, scheduled it or went any further with it. But I have taken these classes. They, I think there's some beneficial paths of the class, but I don't know if right now is the time to be doing this class, being we're right in the middle of winter as well, so.
Yeah, we were talking about maybe postponing it. Definitely for right now. How do you feel about that?
I think that'd be a good idea. I mean, there's a lot of paths of this that need to be thought out and put together. Granted, you need the class first before you can do it. Our road commissioners have taken the class. In talking to them tonight, they have told us that there are paths of the class that they have already put into place, which is great, because that's the idea, is take something out of these classes and put it into work. I do feel right now, though, postponing the class would make perfectly good sense. So I would support that.
How do you feel?
I think that Cindy Hart, my logic, I did schedule the class. Oh, wait, wait.
Well, it is old business, it is old, it's old business under her, so essentially, that's how you've made the policy.
They don't have to come, this is for anybody. It's available for people that, well, private roads, we have a lot of those. That notification has already been sent out. That's a different way to take care of a road than the gravel roads are, of course, different. If the road commissioners feel that they know enough, there's no reason why they have to be here. But I think this is beneficial to anyone that hires a plow, that pays for salt or sand, and other people can learn what the road commissioners learn and make their decisions too. But I don't think every time they pitch a fit, we have to just say, "Oh, my goodness, let's not get them upset."
No, that's not the case. That's not the case. So I think by the sounds of it, this class was already scheduled and, you know, and ready to go before it even came to this board, by the sounds of it, so.
No, that's not true. I came, no, if you watched the meeting last night, you'll see that I came here, told you that they used to have it at the Yelts, and that they're not doing it that way any longer, that they are doing it to come into private towns. And then Jennifer asked if another town could be allowed, and I said I would check. I called the next morning, and they said, yes, they would love to have two towns because they want to spread good information. That doesn't mean we have to shove it down their throat. This is available, but don't put it off because somebody gets a little upset.
That's not my reason for putting it off. I just think right now, in the middle of winter, is not the time to be holding a class, holding this class, so.
I mean, people that do want to come, it's available too. It's not costing us anything.
I don't, I don't support holding the class right now, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, nobody has to go, but by you can't, you know, this is education. Doesn't look like you're not going on it. Any questions, or shall I sit down and shut up?
I don't know. I have mixed feelings about it.
She's taking the class.
I've taken the class, I found it's informative, and, I'm sorry, my bag fell over down there. I feel like it's informative, and you're right, it would be beneficial to other people in the town, but at the same time, it's, the way it was, I don't know.
The way we went about it, we should have talked with them first.
Well, you're not exactly in charge of you or the road.
No, but we need to.
And I have a book over there that I'd like to copy. That's why I came in early today, I'd like to copy out that chapter, so that we all have a better idea of where we are. We currently have no job descriptions or definitions for what a road commissioner should do. We give them a blank check budget, that they're allowed to spend wherever, whenever, and on whatever they want to. We have no road inventory.
Let's stop here. This has nothing to do with that at all. This, we're talking about a class.
All right.
I think if the class is held somewhere else, and they want to do it somewhere else next Tuesday, that's absolutely wonderful.
But you don't feel that it's not a bad decision.
But I don't feel, I don't, not right now. No, not right now. I'm sorry.
Well, just give me the reason, not right now.
You know the reasons.
Well, please express it so that everybody knows.
This has been done in a very backhanded way, so that's my opinion on this. So I think it's a great class. Like I said, I've taken the classes, I've taken the New Hampshire version.
I don't know how I could be any.
There's a lot in there. So I think just by bringing it to us, you know, bring it to the committee, to the selectmen last week, and in two weeks, the class is going to be held, that's not enough notice to really get it out there as well, so. Anyway, that's all.
Anyway, okay, well, you guys vote, and also, one thing, the road committee does my scheduled meeting next Tuesday, the 16th, at 6:00 after your meeting, and we'd love to have you all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can anyone else speak? Just going.
No.
No. All right, what's the direction of the board?
I'll make a motion, we cancel the class, or postpone the class. I guess if they wanted to, if someone wants to have the class, or whatever, and somewhere else, but right now, I don't see where the Town of Acton, where it's a good thing for the Town of Acton to host the class.
I'll second that. How do you feel?
I'm going to abstain from the vote.
This is a class that. You really don't have a reason to.
You don't have a reason to abstain, unfortunately.
Abstentions are generally, if you had an immediate, you know.
Conflict or.
Vote however you want, I'm just saying, an extension really doesn't, you don't have a reason to qualify you.
No, you're right.
Is there any way we could do it somewhere else?
So did the board vote, or what do we?
Any other place we could have it?
Can you speak up, Kim, so I can hear you.
I was just wondering if there was any other place we could have it besides right here at the town hall? That's all.
Wouldn't be we, that's the.
I guess not we, but we did jump into it, Elise and I.
Say you want to hold it somewhere else.
You know, and this wasn't, I didn't realize, I, when I said yes, I didn't realize it was going to be, you know, a conflict. I thought it was actually for camp roads and for people that have their roads plowed. I thought this was, what this was about, so that's why I said yes. I haven't even taken this class yet, it's something I do need to do.
Well, partially it is, for the private roads are invited, but at the same time.
I guess I'm torn, is.
Yeah.
Trying to work with everybody, trying to make everybody happy. We'll do it.
Call for vote.
So you have a motion and a second, so you need to vote on it. Whether the motion fails or passes, you still need to vote on the motion.
All in favor?
All in favor of canceling the class.
Canceling the class.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Those opposed?
Don't look at me. One, two.
Sorry.
So the class is on, 16th, unscheduled. Who is it that you want the town to notify? You want me to notify what boards and committees?
You don't have to notify anybody.
Don't notify anybody?
No.
Okay.
It's out, it's out there.
It's out there.
Okay.
New Business Treasurer Job Description.
Michelle, join us at the podium. All right, so I have some documents for you. So it may be easier if you actually tear the first page off and look at it that way. So the Treasurer Job Duties, that's the list that essentially Michelle took from her daily activities, okay? So that's that. And then the top page, Elise put a nature of work summary in there, some duties that I think we need to shift those over in there, maybe go over just the applicable ones and the requirements of work.
Yep. Would you want to read the nature of work?
The nature of work, right down through here? Or no? Where we going?
Did you get the top page?
I did, I ripped it off. Alrighty, so the nature of work. This is responsible administrative, supervisory, and fiscal work in the handling of the Town of Acton funds. Employee of this class is responsible for the custody, collection, disbursement, and investments of the town funds. Work involves cash management, supervising the collection of town funds, maintaining liaisons with audit and school departments, banks, and the general public, dispersing funds to cover expenditures, and preparing and administering department budget. Work is performed under the general supervision of the Board of Selectmen with considerable independence of action in accordance with the applicable, excuse me, laws, and following general accepted accounting practices. Work is reviewed through observation, verification, internal audit, and through fiscal audit.
Michelle, did you have any feedback on that?
No, on that section, no.
Okay, so essential duties and responsibilities. Michelle provided a list, and then I had some additional if applicable, that I didn't know if needed to be included or not. I guess I'll read down through that, unless you want.
Do I want to? No.
Okay.
I'll let you know the things that I, that I could see changed.
Okay, reconciling, just stop me, or else I'll just continue reading. Reconciling daily deposits collected by the Town Clerk, Tax Collector. Biweekly or as needed, cash deposits to the bank and in-house check scanning. Reconciling with the school transfers for biweekly warrants creating transfers. Online banking, cash management administrator, that's all one term, cash management administrator. Managing cash flow reconciling bank statements. Cross-checking school and municipal bank reconciliations quarterly. Collecting and processing revenue from transfer station, rec. department, code enforcement, and fire rescue services. Preparing weekly payroll and accounts payable warrants, posting daily work and creating adjusting journal entries as needed. Filing quarterly returns for federal and state income tax withholding. Filing quarterly unemployment reports with MMA. Creating W-4 and 1099s for employees and vendors annually. Schedule annual audit and provide the auditor with all relevant information to complete the audit. Reconcile ambulance billing service balances. Workers' comp insurance administrator. Property casualty insurance administrator. Unemployment insurance administrator. Health insurance administrator. We could probably put all those in one line, and add administrator at the end. Main employee, Main Public Employees Retirement System Administrator. We can leave that separate, though, because that seems, I don't know, different than insurance, which is also referred to M-E-P-E-R-S. Prepare draft of annual and special town meeting warrants. Prepare annual budget to present to warrant and finance committee. Create RFPs for banking, loan, and audit services. Administer new hire information to communicate and communicate with Main Department of Labor for new hire notifications. Assisting selectmen with the annual tax commitment. And some things I came across, and other examples I saw were to add and let me know. Prepares annual financial reports for selectmen and taxpayers and other reports as, not directed, I think I meant, but as requested, maybe? As requested. Monitors town funds, communicating with financial institutions and Board of Selectmen. Responds to taxpayer inquiries and requests for information regarding tax liens and foreclosures. Assist in use, programming, and maintenance of towns' computer systems.
Can I make a suggestion and change there?
Yep.
Assist in use, updating and maintenance of the town computer systems in the town administrator's absence.
Updating and maintenance.
Yeah, so the whole programming part, I am not qualified to do that.
Okay. Oh, programming. And TA's absence. Okay. Maintains personnel records, including employee status, records of time worked, payroll deductions, PTO, wage increase, et cetera, which goes along with the weekly payroll. Are you responsible for tax liens?
I am, once they are filed to lien by the tax collector. I am responsible for overseeing the collection and handling the maturity process. So when the, after 18 months, when those tax liens come to maturity and automatic foreclosure takes over, I'm responsible for that section.
But she doesn't file them, so you want to be careful how you word that.
So oversee.
Unless you would like to file them.
Tax liens.
Collection and maturity process.
Okay. And was there anything else that was left off that you thought should be added?
Not specifically, of course, you know, there's 100 things you do in a day that you don't think about, you just do.
Right, and they, I mean, jot them down, and you can add them if needed later. Did you want to read requirements of work?
You can do it.
You sound like you've got a sore throat.
Still recovering.
Did you want to read it?
No.
Okay. Requirements of work. Requires detailed specialized and extensive knowledge of the practices and procedures of cash management, investment, budgeting, and municipal accounting. Thorough knowledge of modern methods of receiving, depositing, and dispersing large amounts of money. Ability to. of money, ability to accurately prepare complex accounting data and produce comprehensive financial reports, knowledge of banking and investments and the ability to analyze, maintain and report on cash flow and investment needs, knowledge of tax process including tax lien requirements, ability to work independently and maintain working relationships with fellow staff and general public.
I think that sums it all up.
Okay.
I'm happy with that.
Okay. Excellent, thank you for coming in.
No problem.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Oh, Goat Hill ADA Trail.
Carl Davis contacted me today to pass along the news that the town was not granted, well, did not win the grant process for the ADA trail. Apparently there were eleven applications, they gave away three grants, Town of Acton was number four, so they are not working, not going to be moving forward with the ADA trail for now, they're going to apply again next year.
Okay. Okay, deputy CEO.
So I've had some conversations with the code enforcement officer and have a thought for the board that I'd like you to consider and get some ideas on how you might want to move forward. So as you're aware, we have been advertising in different places and we have not gotten a big turnaround on applicants based on what we're putting out there. We've gotten four, I think that out of those four, two you could probably interview, for the sake of interviewing. The applicants didn't have the, the knowledge that he really was looking for to bring somebody in at that position at that time. So we started looking at and talking about possibly restructuring the office, so wanted to give you some thoughts and put them out on the table. So currently, he works thirty-five hours a week at his salary, that's already approved. The secretary that's in there currently, she's the land use secretary, planning board secretary, she works thirty-five to forty hours a week. She has worked for this town for five years now, she can do a very large amount of what the CEO does, she doesn't do inspections, she doesn't issue permits, but she essentially is the brains behind the letter-writing operations, the filing and the, a big piece of the, the compliance of it. So, the idea came up about possibly shifting her to that position, shifting her to a deputy CEO position and bringing, instead of looking for a CEO, looking for a secretary, if you will, to work the twenty hours a week. So we would really just be taking those lines and swapping them. There is enough money in this current year's budget to do that, just the way it stands and just the way the voters have voted, so there'd be no change there. It would be talks that would go before the selectmen and warrant and finance for July one of the upcoming year. I think that everybody can agree that the primary purpose and the, the immediate need for this deputy position is to work on compliance and violations, that's an area that we feel like she could pick up and run with, as far as taking the files that we know have violations and writing the letters and following up with the attorney or following up with the property owner, we feel like she could do that easily. We do still have the other deputies on the books, should we, you know, should he go out of town and we need to bring somebody in for an inspection? We know that regardless of who we brought in at any, you know, who we brought in to start probably wasn't going to have any certifications, she is looking down the road to cut back on hours, so the ideal situation, if it's a shift that the board wants to do, is that, you know, until now through the end of the fiscal year, she would have to continue to work thirty-five hours, I mean, we would have a good twenty hours starting to pick up the deputy CEO position, but the other fifteen to twenty hours is going to be training the person that comes into that position to do the everyday stuff. She is more than happy to cut down hours, you know, come the fiscal year, down to, you know, twenty, thirty hours, depending on what the need is, to get back to where the deputy position really was supposed to be, you know, fifteen to twenty hours a week. It's not carbon snow, it's not anything that, that anything's been offered to anybody, we still have, like I said, two individuals that I think that we should bring in along with her, but there might be a, you know, a, a way to possibly reorganize and structure and get caught up on some of that stuff that needs to be done sooner than later by just shifting some personnel. It would probably be a lot easier to find a secretary at, you know, thirteen, fourteen dollars an hour for twenty hours a week, when we last applied for the position that was open in my office, I mean, we had fifteen applicants. You know, the, the problem is we're just not finding someone that meets the needs of, of the town, but at the same time, just like the selectmen, you know, you, they hear the frustration, the staff down there is frustrated, I mean, they want to get these things caught up just as much as the public wants them to be caught up on them, but at this point, they just don't have the manpower, so, something to think about, hoping to reach out to you guys tomorrow, hopefully with the liaison Ed, we can schedule some interviews and just kind of want you to think about how that might work and hope we can continue the conversation.
Sounds like a good plan, because even on the initial talk about the deputy CEO that we were looking to put in, was more of a paper side of it than it was-
It really was, right.
Outside physical inspection side, it was, it was the-
Right, there was never really a lot of talk about sending the person out to the field, and not to say that, I mean, because she's certainly certifiable, I mean, there's certainly, you know, I mean, the time could come that she could, that she could be certified and get some of those, but it's really cleaning up a lot of what's in there.
Yeah, it was, it was when, when the CEO goes out and does his inspections and whatnot, comes back and says, this needs to get done.
Right.
You know, put this into paper form, so I, I mean, yeah, it sounds like a perfect way of doing it to me, especially if we can bring in someone on the secretarial side to take care of what she's doing day to day.
And she already has the, the knowledge and knows what needs to be done, and she knows how he works at this point and, you know, how things work, so, I mean, it's, again, I mean, we're, you know, we've still got a couple of people to interview and-
Right.
But we need to do something sooner than later, you know, we've, we've been advertising it, we've been looking at different things, so.
Yeah, I think it's a good plan, and if we did it sooner than later, like you say, we've got six months to try it too.
Right, and I, yeah. I had, was hoping to have some time with you guys before, but I didn't, but essentially, and I don't need to go over now, but we've crushed the numbers, crunched the numbers, basically through February fifth of eighteen, it's about three weeks out through the end of the fiscal year, what that would look like with the current position, bringing in secretarial, and then what, what it would look like with the new fiscal year, you know, it was very clear with the CEO when we sat down and started running numbers that it was still going to be at the, you know, your goal was still the one point five, and I, I really think that we could keep it within that, so. Just a thought.
It's a good thought.
So you'll talk tomorrow and try to nail down some interview time?
Yes. But just Ed?
Yes.
And then, okay.
Yep.
Okay, public comment.
Dennis Long, you might understand that anybody that's asking for money from the town, that's not a department of the town, has to have those requests in by February-
Second, correct.
Okay, I just want to be clear on that. The other thing is, is the road committee. We have talked since I've been on the road committee, three or four months, about different things to do with the roads, whether it's the bridges, whether it's Buzzard Road, the road ordinance and, and different things that we need to look at, and we haven't moved forward at all on any of this. And you rightly say, you know, about us meeting with the road commissioners to work on this stuff, but I have yet, for any meetings we've had, neither road commissioners have been willing to come to the meetings. So what is the direction, or what would the selectmen like to see from the road committee, when it deals with some of these issues, like putting finances aside to do some bridges, some engineering, or working on some road projects or ordinances, I mean, we're at a time now, and I brought this up a month ago or two months ago.
And just so you know, not to interrupt you, but there is a different timeline for proposed ordinances, there's an, um, there should be a memo in, in your road committee box out there, if you don't have it, certainly I'm making sure you have it before you leave, but there's, just so you know, there's a different deadline for ordinances, because I know there was some talk about, you guys asked for permission to possibly change the road ordinance some and put it before the people, that's a little further out, so really the budget is the biggest thing that you need to be working on now.
But, but my point is, time goes by very quickly and it, it's like this snow class, there might be things with a warrant finance committee, for example, when you take this, you listen to what this class offers, it might cost the town ten times what they're, we're spending now, and, but there might be half the expense too, I mean, I have no idea, but this is why I think it's important now to do this, is because it is budget time and the warrant finance committee has questions and so do townspeople, and if we have a little better understanding of why we're spending the money like we're spending it, then I think it'd be help, so what I would like to see is a little bit of direction for the road committee from the selectmen on how to deal with some of this stuff, or are you saying that you just don't want to deal with it at all?
No, we'll, um, we'll talk about it on the sixteenth at the road committee meeting. What, what it is, I'm not, I guess I'm unclear, like what, I know you're saying there should be money put aside for bridge maintenance.
Uh, or-
Is that what you're talking about?
I mean, we know the bridge down to the, like, the road dam, we know that needs to be either some serious repair-
Right.
Or replaced, and, and to find out what we need to do, we're going to have to have an engineer look at it, and it's going to cost a certain amount of money, whether it's fifty thousand or seventy-five thousand, and if we're going to do that, then we need to get this in so that it can go through the process, so it can be voted on at town meeting, you know, different things like that is what I'm, and we've been talking about this for quite a while.
All right, let's start with the meeting next week that I'll be at.
Okay. Hopefully the road commissioners will come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Since I'm not allowed to speak about, regarding the code officer, I was wondering, and I have information that I'd like to share with-
Speak to the microphone, please.
Yeah. Um, since I'm not allowed to speak about the code officer or that department at this point, I was wondering, since I have information I'd like to share with the selectmen, that the meeting you just talked about that you would all have, is that going to be a private meeting, or can the public attend, and I'd like to attend?
You're talking about in regards to the change of the position, possible change of the position?
Well, we would normally hold it at a four o'clock workshop, if the doors are open.
So that would be at what date? This coming?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, depending on the board's instruction, I mean, we certainly need to move forward and decide what we're going to do, so, I mean, I kind of took it, took it as, because we do only meet once a week, that I was going to schedule some interviews tomorrow and hopefully get them in, that was going to be the next step, and then, once Ed has some input based on the three people that we interview, you could talk more about if you wanted to restructure or go with the standard, you know, the-
Right, and the interviews are not open to the public.
No, the interviews aren't, but is that how I took it, you want that done first?
Interviews are first.
So I'm going to be scheduling interviews probably tomorrow, so those certainly won't be open to the public, and after that, Ed as the liaison will report back to the board and make a recommendation as to whether or not we should consider this reconstruction, reconstruction of positions, or if one of the other applicants, you know, is better suited to leave the things the way it is.
So the information that I have that I'd like you to see, before the decision is made to either hire someone or restructure, would I be allowed to attend that meeting? And how would I get that?
Well, if you've got information-
You can send me the information, I mean, I, I will get it to the board.
Between that and, you know, there's also the Thursday evening.
Okay, are you the next scheduled Thursday meeting?
Yes.
I am.
So this Thursday or?
At seven.
At seven. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'll read the announcements.
Get more.
We do?
Nine Sunset Boulevard. As far as the treasurer is concerned, I noticed again, in accordance with accounting practices, but you didn't give what type of accounting practices, is this from the American Association of Municipal Treasurers, is this the accounting practice of, of some other standard? You ought to put the standard in there, otherwise I think it's rather-
I thought I did municipal.
Is there an organization called the Maine Municipal Accounting Practices?
There's treasurer.
Municipal accounting. I'll ask the treasurer.
Whatever it is, I think you ought to put it in there besides the saying accounting practices. And the second thing is, I don't understand why everyone is afraid of people getting up and talking counter to what the general feeling of the Board of Selectmen is, they should do it politely, that's true, but again, when people have a particular point that they wish to bring out, I was told by a couple people that they were forbidden to be put on the agenda, and I don't know whether that's even legal, I don't even know what the definition of a public meeting is, does a public meeting allow for people to get up?
Can we pause for a minute, because we, if you don't clarify this as we go along, you want to clarify what you, what you said and why the individuals told it couldn't be on the agenda, so we can just not have to deal with that next week and just clear it up now.
We've given people answers that, and we were done with the answer, we're done with the subject, that they, they keep bringing it back up.
Okay.
Yeah, so when they want to be put on the agenda for the same thing that we've already said was a done deal, we don't put them back on the agenda.
Do we have an ethics policy?
We can't keep-
Do we have an ethics policy?
No. I, I also want to let you guys know, we don't have to offer you public comment.
That's what I wanted to find out about.
It's, this is-
If we don't have reason to get a public comment, then I guess my next question is, all these people coming here, taking their time out, taking gasoline and, and driving here when we can watch it on YouTube the next day, I'm just trying to figure out what-
Well, because some of the people have come up and we've, we've, we've set a guideline for the way the, the meetings are run, that was brought up by the podium, we have made changes and we've done suggestions, to a degree.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
If you feel satisfied with it, I don't know if the people here in the audience feel the same way, but that's not, not my concern right now, I would suggest considering an ethics policy, okay, in terms of how people act, both out in the audience as well as behind the table, and what is expected in terms of public officials or officers being sarcastic at voters who come in and ask questions and are impolite, I think that's something that should be addressed, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't know what he means by that.
And just, I just end with clarity, I mean, I want to make sure that the, the public is aware, the Board of Selectmen will hear any subject, you know, they can't hear personnel issues, that's, that's by law, the employee has rights, the only emails that were sent out, in, in, I think Mrs. McMahon has kind of made it clear when she was up there, is that, we, the board has instructed me to put anything on the agenda, as long as it's not a personnel issue and as long as it's not something they've already answered, if they, if they make a decision about something and they vote on it and they make the decision, then don't bring it back up unless the selectmen, unless they make the decision. So the, the, what was being referred to is situations that were brought up, the board feels like they've addressed them, they've answered them, they want to be back on the agenda for the same question, the board just doesn't feel like they should answer the same thing over again, so it's been, it's only been this one instance.
That's why I, I would agree with what the board's thinking on this is, but that's why you need an ethics-
And part of that is figuring out how you're going to enforce that policy.
Say, listen, according to the ethics policy, we are proceeding with, with your complaint, but we cannot give you any further information about it, except that it will be addressed through our ethics policy.
Greg Vermette, sometimes there are more things to be brought up, it can't be brought up in three minutes, just like I've done some investigating into what the towns have for code enforcement officers.
Which again, is the code enforcement office, that we've told you, we're getting assistance for the office, and once we do, I don't care how well other towns are doing it.
Do we need it?
I don't, yes, we do, look. You're not making the decision. I don't care, we are not comparing town to town. I don't care, we are not comparing town to town.
No, I think by, you know, don't take this wrong, Mr. Vermette, but from your own admission, we do need more people down there to try to get things done that folks have brought forward, and we're trying to figure out how to do that. And we're doing it by shifting some people, hopefully, or hiring another person to help out down there, so.
So we, we are working on it.
Yes.
Moving on to announcements. January eleventh, the selectmen, um, has hours seven, uh, seven to eight. That's this Thursday, right?
Select man, yes.
Select man.
Select person.
Select person, that's me.
Singular, yes.
The sixteenth, the two thousand five Ford ambulance bid is due. On the eighteenth is Kim, seven to eight.
Yeah.
Third Thursday.
I'll be here.
Also, um, no, sorry, I'm going to back up to, wait, it is the eighteenth. The school committee is having an informational budget meeting.
I want to be there.
At six PM, it's open to the public, it's a, it, what it sounded like is information on their budget process that they'd like the public to see. That's at the school.
Is there any way I can switch a selectmen's meeting with one of you, because I need to go to that?
Can't hear you.
I want to, okay, all right.
Upcoming meetings, the twelfth is the marijuana committee at, oh, at five?
Oh, nope, typo.
Is it six?
Yes.
At six. The sixteenth, Board of Selectmen at five. The eighteenth, Running Board at seven. The twenty-third, Board of Selectmen at five. The thirtieth, Board of Selectmen at five.
Then we're adding the road committee?
Road committee, Tuesday, the sixteenth at six. And that's all.
Make a motion. Go ahead.
Motion rejected.
I'll second that.
All in favor. Good night.